Six thirty-two, I will call a meeting to order. Paul, would you please?
Yes, sir.
Would you please just?
I'll be glad. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Weathersfield Select Board Meeting, October seventeen. Agenda review. Is there anything, Brandon, that we need to do with this agenda? Do you organize anything?
No, we did add the Norwich Solar invoice discussion after the agenda was posted. That's the only change I have.
And that is a, yeah, that's a, it's more of an, it's a discussion, but it's more of an informative thing for us to understand what that process is, I guess. Okay. They're not here yet, though?
I believe. Tim, are you there? Can you hear us?
Oh, that's, okay, that's, that's who that is. He's muted. Okay. There are no changes to the agenda. Comments from citizens topics not on the agenda. Anybody have any comments? Red?
Recording in progress.
We had the Forge Revolver company last week. He completed the outside perimeter. And we're trying to get some of the, I received a lot of his chips. So the recommendation is not to cede it right now. Let it rot a little bit, just keep it raw. Going forward. It's almost not to cede it.
Yeah, it's a little late for that.
Yeah. So that's, that's where we're at on there. And then we have a special meeting on next Wednesday at City Security, at the eighteen-seventy-nine Schoolhouse.
Anything else from anybody? Any, oh, Mr. Fuller?
Can I ask a really stupid question?
Probably not.
Okay. Are we gonna be meeting back upstairs ever again? I've been asked that before for a variety of reasons. Number one, so that this could be rented again. And I heard the answer that it costs hundreds of dollars to do that, which I don't believe. So it's kind of a, it was a COVID thing to move down here. Right now, I don't like talking to people behind my back the way we are. And then I gotta always go like this. So upstairs, I throw that question out there.
We still have that table, correct? That was retained at the fire department? Is that correct?
It was retained here and now it's sitting at the eighteen-seventy-nine house.
Okay, so we do still have that table. Okay. How do you feel about that, Brandon?
Upstairs, we have a conference table now. So I don't know where we would, uh...
Well, that would go away. The other table would have to come back for that. I mean, I don't know how deep you want to get into this conversation.
No, I didn't want to get into it deep, but I've been asked more than once about whether or not this space will be rented again for other source uses that it was. And I think it's a, the reason why we moved down here was COVID-nineteen for two years. And, you know, let's face it, a lot of times, we don't have a lot of visitors. I'm feeling really hot right now, so it must cost more money to heat this.
It is warm in here.
So, it is, it is what it is. I don't, I really, you know, I don't like having my back, like, whatever Paul's is back to person too. But I just throw it out there to ask.
Olivia, are you here?
So, uh... Right now, this space is rented. And all we do is just collapse the tables. And then it gets rented. So there's no issue with using the space for mixed-use rentals and board meetings. And then upstairs, we use the conference room every single day.
Olivia, did you have something you wanted to add to this?
No, I'm all set.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
You're not sure?
Well, I just feel like, this is what I was gonna say. I just feel like we're gonna go back into winter. I know this is probably heavy predictions, but COVID's gonna spike again. And then everyone's gonna have to be a full six feet apart, masked, you know, and everything. So I just, that was my thing. I just feel like we're gonna have to be big distance again coming winter.
Paul?
I personally don't mind. I just think what we need to do is find a way of having the tables so that they're not back-facing, like Dave said. I agree a hundred percent with Dave, especially running another meeting down here.
Yeah.
But I like the space down here more than the space up there. It gets cramped up there some. The other thing, you too, is you got all logistics, all the cameras that we've got hard plumbed in now and all that. So are we gonna pay and move that up, or what are we gonna do? I just think what we should do is, to Dave's point, not necessarily get into all of it here, but we should probably look at a more feasible way. I know Brandon's talked with me about some things. I'm sure he's probably talked with you guys about some things. But maybe, maybe we just look, going forward, how and what's our vision for having meetings and having it? So that stuff can stay set up. Maybe we don't have to tear it up, tear it down each time, and still be able to have a camera access and all that stuff.
Well, and we definitely want it available for rental.
Absolutely.
To the citizens.
But I thought, I thought it was too. Is it, so have we missed any rentals because of it or anything? Nobody, nothing has been missed?
Nothing.
Okay, that's just, that's, yeah.
We have three rentals coming up. And it's, we just deconstruct the tables. There was an argument for a different type of table. Because, of course, deconstructing and then reconstructing does take time. And I agree that it's when your back's facing people.
Yeah, that's, that is hard. So I agree a hundred percent with that.
And we did investigate different table arrangements. We could revisit that.
Is there a requirement for us to maintain the distance that we have now?
I don't think there is, but COVID definitely taught us that social distancing practices are good practices to continue.
Well, I will respectfully disagree with that. I know that's not your rule, so I'm not really disagreeing with you.
No, I mean, you know, the other table, you're really cramped up and...
Oh, no, but I mean, if we were to do it down here, is there a way that we could, like, all be along that wall? Or in like a semicircle, this way off of that wall?
Used to all be back here.
It used to always be back here. I mean, yeah, could do that too. Where it's just one thing, and where, like, Dave would be right here, or Kelly would be right here, and Dave would be right here.
Let's try something new in the next meeting.
Okay.
And we can try different arrangements with these tables to see if there's something that we can do.
If I may, I just, personally, you already made a comment. Personally, for myself, I don't need six feet anymore. I'm comfortable if someone else wants to be six feet from me. That's perfectly fine, but I'm okay. So I don't know the rest of the board members, but...
You like the six-feet thing?
I just know that regulations come winter usually stiffen up. I just have noticed that.
We're all gonna get the sniffles.
Where would that happen? I mean, I was emergency management for two years. That doesn't...
Like masks, last year, not everywhere had to have masks.
Yeah, we're out of the, we're out of the COVID. It could go back into it. I get it, I get it, but, you know, I mean...
We'll see.
Let's hope for the best.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, okay. Any other comments from citizens, topics not on the agenda? Brandon, you can try some other stuff.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try different arrangements in the next meeting.
Review minutes from previous meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from ten-three twenty-twenty-two?
Still moved.
I hear a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion on the minutes?
Yeah, I might add it, they're great.
Well, I, I did...
She's still sucking up.
Prior to the meeting, I went over and talked to Chauncey about something. And that is, at the, I'm gonna use this one just as an example. Dave Fuller made a motion to approve the purchase of an industrial dehumidifier and the amount of XX and associated shipping costs. Kelly O'Brien, second to the motion, no discussion. I asked her to say no further discussion so that it doesn't appear as though we are not allowing discussion on topics. Because it could give that, so, and she's fine with that. I don't care if she changes these or not, that's up to her. But I just want it to be a little more clear that there was no further discussion at that point. That was my only thing on the minutes there. Anybody have anything else on the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, ten-three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Norwich Solar invoice discussion. Brandon, can you take us into that?
Tim, is that, is that Tim Harrison on the call?
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Nice to meet you. So I'm, I'm Tim. I'm from Norwich Technologies. And I just wanted to take some time to go over basically how the invoicing from the solar project works. And basically, go through how your GMPs, where the GMP credits come through on your bills, and basically open up for any questions that you might have. So without further ado, let me share my screen. It actually says host disabled participant screen sharing. And I know, Brandon, if that's something that you're able to turn off, I can talk it through, but it would definitely be easier to show it on the screen.
Olivia, go to screen share, there's that little arrow.
Okay, right here. Hold on one second.
You have the little arrow on the right.
Okay.
Left.
All right, looks like I'm able to share.
Okay.
All right, so is everybody looking at the PowerPoint right now?
Yes.
Okay, so Town of Weathersfield net metering agreement. So the backstory is, the Town of Weathersfield signed an agreement basically with, not directly with Norwich Technologies, but with a LLC called Weathersfield Town Garage Solar. And Weathersfield Town Garage Solar owns an array that's producing electricity. And the monetary credits are being partially allocated to the town. Um, so this slide here, I borrowed it. Sorry, there's a pretty, I know that this is making it hard to, to talk about here. Like, myself is ringing in the background, there's... To address that. It actually seems a little bit better now, so let me, let me move forward. So I borrowed this slide from the internet. It actually, though, does a pretty good job of articulating how net metering works. I don't know how much familiarity everybody has here of it, so I just figured it would make sense to do a quick kind of overview of how it works. So there's a solar array. It could be anywhere within GMP territory. This one happens to be on land owned by the Town of Weathersfield. The sun produces, the solar, it captures the energy produced by the sun. It goes out, some, the energy goes out to the grid. Basically, the system owner, which is Town of Weathersfield Solar LLC, tells the utility company, this is, we wanna allocate sixteen percent to the Town of Weathersfield. We wanna allocate ten percent to this small business. Or basically whoever in GMP territory is eligible to get credits can get credits. So the array generates electricity. It runs out to the grid. The utility company then allocates monetary credits onto your bills. So specifically, how does this work for this arrangement? That's kind of a conceptual, how does net metering work? So specifically for this array, there's an array located at Stoughton Pond Road in Weathersfield, which generates electricity. Independent of that net metering agreement, the town does actually receive a lease payment. So I just bring that up, it's just, it's an example of a benefit that the town has from going solar. And it's mutually beneficial. It's beneficial for the system owner in that they get to lease the land to put the array on. And the town theoretically benefits and gains a little bit of income from the land lease. So the system owner, the system owner is, like I said earlier, the Town, Weathersfield Town Garage Solar LLC, which is actually a subsidiary of a company called Barrington Power. And that's just kind of important to keep in mind, because that's who the town is doing business with. That's who the town is paying for basically the monetary credits that could put on their GMP bills. So net metering credits. I've mentioned that term a couple of times. That is the monetary credit that the utility company puts on your GMP bill that gets, that gets applied against your other electricity cost. The rates are basically set by the state program. So going back, I don't, I'm not, don't quote me exactly on the year, but about more than ten years ago, the state passed a pretty comprehensive legislation that dictated how net metering works, what the utility companies' responsibilities are, what the system owner's responsibilities are. And that's basically where the rates come from. And I just make a note down here, the rates will change periodically. Every two years, the GMP updates their rate. There's also some legislation that certain adders fall off after ten years. But I'll go into more detail about specifically how that relates to your net metering agreement further on. So offtakers. So whether, the Town of Weathersfield is an offtaker on this array. So that, you, as an offtaker, the town is receiving credits on their GMP bills that is proportionate to the allocation they've been given. So the system owner has communicated to the utility company, the Town of Weathersfield should get sixteen, sixteen percent of the total production. And the accounts that are getting the sixteen percent, I don't know how well you can see the screen. I can, I can expand this and blow it up a little bigger if needed. But these are the accounts that are held by the Town of Weathersfield that GMP is issuing credits to. And that, these add together make up the sixteen percent. So moving on, monthly credits. And Brandon and I went over this a couple of weeks ago, or probably at this point, a month ago, just to see basically on a bill where your credits come through. And I can certainly, I'll certainly do that later on in the, in the presentation here. But the main, the main premise is on each, each account on the prior slide, each month, you're gonna be seeing line items with three credits. The first credit is the excess credit. And that's based on the statewide blended rate, which is currently about seventeen cents per kilowatt hour. Nope, I forgot the H in there, sorry. Generated. There's a citing adder. So going back to what I said earlier about how the state legislation kind of prescribed how, what the rates are, depending on what type of site it is, you either get a positive adjustment or a negative adjustment. So this site actually does get a negative adjustment. And that's a line item that you would also see on each individual GMP bill. There's also a rec adder. So this, this project gets a positive two-cent adjustment. So despite all the legislative terminology and adders or subtractions, the end of the story, because these two things offset each other. Right now, for every kilowatt hour generated by the array that is allocated to the Town of Weathersfield, the Town of Weathersfield is getting a monetary credit on their bill for just over seventeen cents per kilowatt hour. So that's how you get credits. Now, since you don't own the system, you have to pay for the credits. And that's where the monthly invoicing comes into play. So the NMA, the net metering agreement that the town signed calls for a ten percent discount. So for every credit you get from GMP, you're getting, you're only paying ninety, ninety cents on the dollar. So basically, that is the savings to the town. If you get credits for a hundred dollars, you're only paying ninety dollars, and you save ten dollars. And over the course of one year times twenty-five years, if the, if the agreement runs that long, you know, that adds up to hopefully substantial economic savings for the town. So before I walk through an example, does anyone have any conceptual questions that they wanna go through, or am I good to move forward? All right. In that case, I will move forward. So I'm gonna have to just quickly adjust the screen share to share a different page, a different tab. So everybody now should be looking at an Excel sheet. And if it needs to be expanded the size, let me know. On my screen, it's fine, but I'm sure if you're looking at it on a conference, on a projector screen or something, it might not be that clear. So this is the month of October. And the array, in total, generated just over sixty-six thousand kilowatt hours. Sixteen percent of that was allocated to the town accounts. So these are all the town accounts listed right here. Now, Brandon and I did go through each of these accounts back in August, but I figured for, for this, for this call, it would make sense to just kind of look at one bill, because once, they all work the same way. So I picked this highlighted one, or actually, Brandon picked this highlighted one, because he sent it to me early, just earlier today before the call. So this account is, was allocated one thousand seven hundred and seven kilowatt hours. Again, that's two, about two-point-five, two-point-five-eight percent of the total production of the array. So you should be getting credits for two-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and sixty cents. So when I scroll down to the bill, this is a screenshot from the bill, you see, number one, this is, the generation was, as we expect, that percentage, the calculated allocation matches what GMP is doing. So that tells us our system is in sync with their system. And then further down here, you see the credits. So here's the excess credit at the rate I had talked about. And then here is the citing adder, or in this case, really citing adjuster going down versus up. And then here is the rec adder. And those, again, are wash for this particular rate. And that's not being specifically with the Town of Weathersfield. That's just based on the state rules about what credits are given for certain types of solar sites. So when you add this up across all of the bills, it comes up to a total credits on, on GMP bills for them, for the month of October of just under two thousand dollars, about eighteen hundred dollars. And the ten percent discount cited in the NMA results in an invoice from Weathersfield Town Garage Solar LLC for just over sixteen thousand. So I'm going to now share a screenshot of the, well, what the invoices will look like.
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you now, yes.
Okay. Did you say sixteen thousand or sixteen hundred?
Um, I've been known to, when I speak, add an extra zero. No, sixteen, sixteen hundred, sorry for that.
Thank you.
Hey, that's a good clarification. An extra zero definitely, definitely can go a long way. So let me share my screen now. So here's what the invoices will look like that you would get monthly. So if you, I can, I'm not sharing two screens at the same time, but the sixteen hundred, not sixteen thousand, would be listed here. And that would be basically what the town would owe, would owe Weathersfield Town Garage Solar LLC for October's production. And, you know, in a, in summary, that's, that's really the, that's it as far as what the monthly invoices look like and what the credits on your bills look like. I have a couple more slides I just wanted to run through. And then, of course, we can take any questions you might have. But a couple follow-up items. So monitor your net metering bank. One of the, when we, when these credits, when the allocation is first made, our team on the sales side looks at your bills and sees how much energy you're using each year, and comes up with an allocation that is pretty conservative. Like, we're not trying to overallocate credits to you. The, we wanna make it so that your, most of your electrical usage is offset, but we definitely don't wanna have more credits allocated than you could use. So we, we proactively try to be very conservative in what we allocate, but because we don't have access to your bills, and, you know, we don't know if there's a bad storm, or it's a particularly hot summer, or you have air conditioners running, like, we don't, your, your electricity usages will vary. So one thing I always point out of customers is that you wanna keep an eye on your net metering bank. And I will jump over to another, an image of, of the bill to show where that is. But it's really important to keep an eye on that in the winter and come the spring. Because you don't wanna necessarily have a big credit balance in, in like February. Because if you're having a credit balance and it, and it turns to spring and summer, it's gonna just be producing more electricity, and you're never gonna be able to use it for your credit. So if you're doing, if we, if we work this well, basically, you wanna have a big credit balance going into the winter. And then by the end of the winter, you basically wanna have that credit balance go away. And I certainly would avail myself to Brandon or whoever else, if they wanna reach out in January, I'm happy to look at your bills and confirm that the net metering bank is not growing to a point where you're gonna lose credits. And if we, as long as we look at it in the winter, we can real, we can reallocate, like, say, this account has too much, so we'll send a little over to another account. And, and you wouldn't lose credits. But it is important that we touch base in January. Or if you're comfortable doing it on your own, certainly do it on your own. But I, I would definitely recommend the first year reaching out to me in January, or Feb, more like February, just to take a look at the net metering bank. And then the other thing is contact info. So I'm Tim, like I said earlier, I'm the controller at Norwich Technologies. We are gonna be handling the actual invoicing. So the invoices will come from us, but they're payable to Barrington Power. And the owner or manager of Barrington Power is Jack Bingham. And he'll be copied on all correspondence as well when we send out invoices, should there be any questions. But those are just, and I, I could share this after the call with Brandon, so he can, he can circulate it amongst the, the board as needed. But beyond that, just thank you for your time and support of local renewable energy. We definitely appreciate it. And hopefully, we can get all on the same page of how the net metering works, and can, we can take it from there.
Where to find your net metering?
Are you back to not hearing me again?
Uh, now I can hear you, I wasn't hearing you.
Okay, we're gonna have some questions in the room. So, so, okay, that's a good place to be, right there. Because on this page right here, I think this is where you come up with our, what we owe is sixteen hundred dollars. Now, if I understand it correctly, this is, what we would have paid would have been eighteen hundred dollars if we were paying just directly to GMP, correct?
Um...
Without, without, if we just used our power and we didn't have the solar thing out there, our bill would have been eighteen hundred dollars. Yes?
Not necessarily, because this number here at the bottom, that's the credit you got from GMP. So you, I don't know what your total electricity usage is.
So if you, basically, if, if you, I'm trying to think of the best way to describe this. Without seeing each one of your bills and knowing how much electricity you use each month, this, this column is not intended to say how much electricity you use. It's just intended to show how much credit GMP gave you.
Okay. So tell me, how do I get to look at my bill, our bill, and see what I use, what my total wa... Excuse me, just one moment. Just hold on. Um, dehumidifier makes a lot of noise, sorry.
No worries.
So, so what I, what I, what I think everybody, including myself, is confused about is, okay, I have a bill. I have usage from GMP, we've used power. Let's say that's five thousand dollars. Who's getting paid? Is GMP getting paid? Is, is Barrington Power getting paid? How much is each place getting paid? And how do I look at this thing really nice and easy, like it was presented to us in the beginning, and understand that I'm saving ten percent on my power?
Right, so, so this bill here...
This is one example of your October bill from one of these accounts. You used over two thousand kilowatt hours. You're credited just under two thousand kilowatt hours. If you were to scroll down and look at the deep, like, the line items on the bill, this would be your, your charges for actual usage. So in this, and again, this is, keep in mind, so solar is seasonal. So it is intended that in the summer months, you're building up a credit that you're going to then be using through the winter. So in this example, you'd have the ninety-seven fifty-eight plus the one-eighty-one, and then all of these charges up here. If you did nothing, you didn't do anything with solar, you just had, you just weren't doing that metering, you would basically, your bill would essentially stop here. And that, that would be your charges. But because you are doing solar, you're getting credits. And the credits pile up on your bill to be applied to, you know, either, if you're not fully used in the month they happen, like in July, when the array is producing as much as it's gonna produce all year, you're probably not gonna use all that credit that month. But come the winter, you're gonna be eating up that credit. So like, in this, in this example, for, again, that, that's only showing one bill. These totals are across all of the accounts you have in the net metering program. So in this example, you're getting a hundred, two-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and sixty cents of credit. And you're saving just under, you're saving twenty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents for just October, for just that one account.
And so now it unmutes, so that I can, I can talk, okay. So I'm gonna ask you to slow down just a little bit, so that we can kind of get in there. Because the, the, the way this thing is working is, once you start talking and you keep going, we can't ask questions on where you are. And it start, and then everybody's kind of looking around, and I think we're, we're not keeping up with you. Mr. Fuller?
Okay, no, that's fine.
Hold on, Mr. Fuller?
What's your name, Tim?
Tim, yep.
Uh, Tim, yes.
Okay. I've been here from the very beginning as a board member. My question is, were you working for Norwich Solar when we started this show here to put in the solar system with Weathersfield?
Uh, which would have been in two thousand twenty-one or so?
I think it was before that.
Yeah.
I started working for Norwich in two thousand twenty, the end of two thousand twenty.
The reason I ask that question is, I would have appreciated this presentation during the initial stages. Because I gotta tell you, if we're gonna owe the power bill, like you just gave, a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar thing, and all of this, you need to use this power in the summer, or we gotta go by January, and we can't use it in the summer, or whatever, we would not, and I speak for everybody in this room, we would not have signed on to this project. It's too confusing. And if we are gonna owe Barrington Power, or whoever the entity is that owns this, and have to pay the Green Mountain Power bill, that's not gonna work. Because that was not what we were presented. It was a much simpler presentation than this, right, that you just gave us all. It was that we were gonna receive about eleven thousand dollars to rent five acres at the town garage site. And each of our meters, which were disclosed, we would get a bill from GMP for the month that we would use. And then look at that bill, and it would be a ten percent credit on that bill with the kilowatts used for the month. That was the presentation. We didn't see any of this. What triggered this whole thing was, the town manager got a bill for about sixteen thousand dollars for credits that we were to pay Barrington Power. And we had paid from April to July our own power bills. We paid GMP in its entirety for the eleven meters. That's absolutely insane. And to think that we would somehow store up credits And to think that we would somehow store up credits to get ready to pay for powers that we, that we wouldn't use, like I just heard you say, and meet in January to hurry up and use them, you can't use more power than what we use on the meter. So I, we're at a standstill as far as I'm concerned with this, the way it sits right now, and I'm speaking alone on that one, but I'm not, the other board of, the other board members can weigh in.
Hi, this is Paul Tillman. I, I, Dave stole my thunder, cause that was one of the things I was gonna say is, I, I was here also, um, in the beginning, and, uh, this is definitely not how it was presented, but if it was presented in this way, I wouldn't have voted to go for with anything either. I, I'm, I'm trying to figure out where all the money's gonna be. I mean, you made a comment here that we actually pay for credits, so I'm gonna pay money to get a credit. And then you talk about storage of these credits, and God forbid we get too many credits, cause we'll lose them. But I'm paying for them. So I, 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 I don't, this, this might be a common way that solar companies try to, to do things, but I, I think what's gonna have to happen is we, we need to, we need more than what you're giving us right now, cause I think you made it worse, quite frankly. Um, our understanding of what's going on. I, I can only speak for myself.
No, I'm with you.
So I.
So am I. And I was thinking I was starting to catch on.
And I, and I still, I, I, I don't wanna be, um, I, I, I wanna be, I wanna let you know that I'm, I'm personally, myself, at least, this is my, just me, I'm, I'm willing to try to understand this, cause I think, I mean, I, I, I can, I think we can try to understand it, but I, I, I am, I, I don't like how this is, is gone down and I, I would never do this again to this, to this way. It should have been a, a more simpler, um, a way of doing it, but, um, so I, I, I don't know where we're gonna be at.
Go, Dan.
I can tell you, Tim, where we would have been. We would have listened much harder to a proposal that the town, and I would have backed it, seen the financial data, to own the project outright and to pass, go before the voters and ask a bond rather than do this. Cause we would have supplied it to the grid if it worked financially on our own.
And, and that was something that he pointed out earlier, that, that this is done, I believe, this way because of, um, some sort of legislation and we're not an owner.
Right.
We're a subsidiary.
All right, can I, can I just say something?
Sorry.
Go ahead, Tim.
No, just number one, um, again, I did not do the initial presentation. I under, I do understand where you, where you're all coming from. Net metering, you know, when people put it in a diagram, it does sound, they make it sound very simple, but it is not very intuitive to think, you save money, but you're paying two bills. So I completely understand where you're coming from. I'm not, I'm not on the sales side, I'm on the accounting side and, you know, my brain thinks differently, um. My mi- my mind is more inclined to think about things from the numeric and accounting perspective, and I understand completely where you're coming from, that it just feels counterproductive repaying two bills, but somehow you're saving money. But just really quick, the thing about not, the, whether you could own the system or not, that necessarily wasn't, has nothing to do with the, like the legislation rules. That's just simply boiled down to, and again, I'm not on the sales side, so I don't know how the proposal was put forward. But theoretically, if the town did own, did own the array, they wouldn't, you wouldn't be paying a invoice to anybody, cause you would be owning the credits. Um, if anything, you would be billing people for the extra credits that are being generated, cause you're only getting sixteen percent of it. Um, so I did just wanna clarify that that's nothing to do with any legislation. That must have been a decision that was made to be an off-taker versus being the owner of the system, and I don't have the extra in that.
Uh, th- this is Paul again. Um, just quickly, I'd, I'd like to have this presentation, cause I, the, some of the problem is, is that we're seeing this for the first time here, we haven't had the time to absorb it either. I'd like to, I'd like to get a copy of this for myself, so at least I can sit down and, uh, kind of go through this myself a little bit and, and, uh,
Absolutely.
Um, you know, I, I, I appreciate you trying to explain it, um, but like I said, I'm, I, I'm really sorry that you made it worse. Not, not intentionally, but it, it did. And, and then my second thing is more for the chair, and since you're in accounting, Tim, I don't think you'll be able to answer this, but, so there's an entity using our town name that's not ours, that anybody sees is gonna think it's the town. So this is the Town of Weathersfield Solar LCC. How can they use the Town of Weathersfield as part of that name? If somebody else hears that, they're gonna think that that's the town, the town owns this, this is the towns. Is that, and it sounds like something that a solar company would do intentionally to make, to make it sound like, oh, look, hey, we're part of the town. So I'm really curious on, on how they're able to use the Town of Weathersfield.
Came from Norwich Solar.
Yeah, I never heard about that.
I don't know.
I, I remember that happening.
I'm not happy with that either, but.
That was Norwich Solar that did that. In, 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 in the beginning, they didn't name it Norwich Solar LLC.
Right, did we agree to that? Or did they, okay. All right, no, that's fine. I, it, it's a lot of, there's been a lot of stuff going on, so.
So I don't think tracking this is impossible, but I do have a question for you, Tim. How long did it take you to put together this chart with all the account numbers and allocations and so forth?
Uh, maybe about thirty minutes. To set up the template, I mean, once the template is set up, cause I think you and I had gone through this for August. So once you sent me the one for October, I just plugged in the total production and everything else updates. So, I mean, that wasn't terribly time consuming. Um, but that, that's neat, that's not in, in any way making any comment about what you guys are talking about, just simply asking, answering the question.
I, I'd like to see it myself. I'd, I'd like to work through it myself. I think it is.
Sure, no, I can work through it.
Yeah, I've gotta, I've gotta see how the numbers a- add up and subtract out and, and, you, you know, at the end of the year, are we paying more or less? Y- y- you know, and it obvious to me has to be less, plus, plus the lease. The town has to be in a better place. That was the whole goal.
I, I am, like I said at the top, the net metering is not as intuitive as it's, as anyone ever makes it sound. And I, I, and not being on the sales side, I'm not trying to turn you in the bus, but it's just, it's a very difficult people to explain, cause it's counterintuitive that you're getting two bills, but somehow saving money. But I can tell you, um, from just having done this for a while now, that the only way this possibly would work out where you are, are losing money and not saving money, is if you're being allocated too much energy. And I feel fairly confident that that would not be the case. Um, and particularly, like I said, and throughout the winter, I'm happy to want to work with Brandon to look at the accounts and make sure that that's not gonna happen. Like, I, I can say that with complete honesty. Unless, unless you're being allocated more energy than you can use over the course of a calendar year, you wouldn't, there's no way you would lose money on this. Now, what else was said or how it was presented to you, I, I can't speak to that. But at the end of the day, you're, you, you do receive credits, and you get invoice for ninety percent of the credit. So that is, there is that ten percent spread. So unless the credits expire, which again, we would do everything we can to work with, with Brandon to make sure that that doesn't happen, you, you would not necessarily lose money on, on the arrangement. The logistics of it all and the confusion and how it was presented, completely understand where you're coming from on that though.
There's, there, there is another thought that was triggered by your presentation. And that has to do, it, it, nothing with the money numbers. But you talk about credits that we build in the summer, so that we can use them in the winter. Because we don't generate as much power in the winter. Now, that's wonderful that we have these credits floating around, but those credits aren't gonna turn light bulbs on when there isn't any other source of energy, which is the goal of this state for some reason. Which, I don't mind saying I do not support. Sorry, but, um, I, 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 is there a way to, uh, I mean, I think there is, because you're, you're doing it with the credits. Somehow you're moving a percentage of those credits from one period of the year when we are, you know, the sun is low on the horizon and, and we have shorter days that don't make power. And, you, you know, we wanna take the credits from the summer and apply them to that winter. Like I said, credits aren't gonna turn light bulbs on.
Right, well, and you're, you're hitting on an issue that is, like a pol- that's a policy question and why the net metering program is set up as it is, you know, I can't answer that. But I mean, one thing I should say for sure is, this whole program doesn't work without GMP and the utility companies. They're the ones who make sure that when you hit the light switch, the lights go on. They're the ones who have to maintain the transmission lines, so. Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but this, this is how the net metering program is structured. And, and the utility companies, by what the state legislated, ma- basically manage it and administer it.
And the questions we are here. Paul, go ahead.
Um, now, just, just quickly, that one slide that you have that, that's up right now on the screen. I think one of the, I think one of the things that we're trying to understand is, um, are you, so are you saying that it's hard to understand how much money we would save each month and more? Because some, we use some power in the summer and, and not in the winter and so on. It would be easier.
Right.
It'd be easier to tell over a whole year, cause I think what I'd like to do is, this is one bill right here for one month. And I think the bottom line we'd like out of this, even though it's got a really nice Excel chart here, is if we didn't have the solar company, would our bill be two thousand dollars and with the solar company, our bill is eighteen hundred dollars? I mean, not, not those are real numbers, but I think that's what we wanna see, and what we're expecting to see.
So you, you're a hundred percent right. It has to, you really have to look at it over the course of a year, because credits get generated in the summer and you're not necessarily using all those credits until you get to the winter. Um, so that's, that's number one. But number two, what would your bill look like? So this, you, for this month, for this one account, the one that I have highlighted yellow, you're paying GMP twenty-one dollars. If you didn't have solar, you didn't do any, you weren't part of the net metering agreement, you would be paying GMP all of these nu- the, the, these values up here in green, plus the ninety-seven, plus the one eighty-one. So you would be paying GMP north of three hundred dollars versus paying twenty-one dollars. Um, like, uh, so, I mean, like I said earlier, you, I understand why it's confusing. I completely am understanding of that in presentations, this stuff is not, the, the finer details aren't really discussed and you as the, the customers don't necessarily have any context to ask the questions you're asking today. So I totally get where you guys are all coming from here. Um, and I, I'm hoping that I'm helping to shed a little bit of light on it.
What was your?
But, well, but, uh, you, you, you went to a dramatic example there instead of paying tw- I mean, who wouldn't do that? Pay twenty-one dollars rather than three hundred. But, that wasn't what was going on here between April and July, when we paid a hundred percent of our GMP bills and received a bill from Barrington Power for ninety-five hundred dollars. So, in the picture that you just painted, would we not get a bill from Barrington Power for like two hundred and sixty dollars? It wouldn't be as easy as paying twenty-one dollars to GMP.
No, no, you're right. And I, I, I was answering, what, what would your bill look like if you, if you didn't have solar? If you weren't part of the agreement. So in this arrangement, you have twenty-one dollars, plus what you're paying to Barrington Power, and your savings is about, is thirty dollars. Um, now to your question about the summer. So, one of the challenges when these arrays first go live, the G, the utility company, and there's a lot of paperwork that gets filed, and oftentimes it takes the utility company several months to get the billing cycles lined up. So, in this instance, it was unfortunate, the array went live in April and the billing administrative work wasn't done until August. So, the whole summer when there's high production, those credits didn't hit your account until August. So, again, I understand the, the, um, the predicament you're in and why it feels like something doesn't make sense or add up. And that's, that's, that's a product of it being the first year and the initial billing, and that it took three months to get the, the utility company allocating the credits as instructed.
Really important question. Um, I feel, yeah, pat myself on the back.
I thought you were gonna say you forgot it.
No, 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 no. Um, so, you say we need to touch base in January to deal with credits, so that we don't end up losing them. Who is responsible for touching base?
So, Norway, I, I, I put it out there as something that I always, I recommend people do, so that they don't, like to proactively address having credits expire. I can certainly put it on my radar to reach out to Brandon and say, let's set it, let's set aside, you know, thirty minutes one afternoon to just look at your bills and confirm the allocations are not, no accounts are being over allocated and credits won't, won't expire. So, um, you know, that's something I'm happy to take on is a, reach out to you guys in, I guess, the middle of the winter to, to make sure that, that we, we do that. And honestly, it, I'm happy to even take the, the bills and, and run through them and write up a summary for you about where you stand and just confirming, hopefully that no allocations have to be changed, but if allocation have to be changed, that's not the end of the world either. You wouldn't lose the credits, we would just rearrange which accounts they're gonna go to. To make sure that you don't lose money to your value.
That, that, yeah, that was, you just kinda answered the question I was gonna have. It'd be great for you to talk with Brandon, obviously, but what do you do if you've got all these, you credits, you're gonna lose something. I, how do you, so what you're saying is, you, 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 and we've already paid. So what sounds like you're doing is you're playing a shell game of moving credits around to fit where they need to fit. So what you're saying is, you can give more credits to one of these other accounts?
Right, so.
Wouldn't they all have the same amount? Aren't they all just supposed to be, everything's supposed to be ten percent off?
Right, so they're all getting the same discount. But let's, let's say, for example, that we look at the bill in January and this account here highlighted in yellow has a massive credit balance. And it's like, hold on, that, that account is getting allocated way too much. So, we would maybe drop, we would drop this one down to say, GMP moving forward, don't give this account any more electricity, cause it has, already has to leave the credit. And we actually, this one, let's bump it up to, to three and a half percent, do whatever it is to make it, make it in total come out to the sixteen percent that the town has contracted to purchase. So it's not, it's not making, just moving numbers to make it fit, it's just making sure that one account isn't getting too mu- too, too much electricity that it can't necessarily use. So, now where we could potentially run into issue is if all of these accounts are over allocated, then we would have a problem, but I would, I'm, I'm running on the, the basic assumption that when we went up, when, when our sales team worked with you and we looked at your utility bills, the sixteen percent that you're being allocated in total wasn't more than the town was using. So what I'm saying with, with touch base with Brandon in, in the winter, is to make sure that, um, out of that sixteen percent, none of these ones are, are being over allocated. And once, maybe one, maybe one bill you're paying, you know, three hundred dollars a month on this bill, and then this one still has a massive credit balance in February, we would wanna rearrange the allocation to make sure that that doesn't continue.
All right, just, just quickly, just, cause we lost you there. I just, I have to ask this question before we get on it, but we're getting short on time here. Why wouldn't all the, and, and this might not be an, an answer for here, maybe you need to think about it and give it to us later, but, why wouldn't all the allocations be the same? Well, then, then you don't have to move stuff around. And, and, and when you say you're not moving stuff around, i- i- like the shell game, you are moving stuff around, cause why wouldn't you do it right the first time and just make everything the same and then you're good? I don't know.
So, I have a, I, I don't know if this is gonna be a, a good answer for that, but like, let's say this account here highlighted in yellow, you guys put in a new air conditioning unit or something that's more energy efficient. We can't necessarily anticipate that that's gonna happen, but next year, when your, your summer usage is way down compared to prior year, allocating two point five eight percent to that account might, might not make sense anymore, since you've, you've put in an, an, an energy efficient air conditioner. Or maybe on this account, you install a new appliance that uses more electricity than you did in the past. So, that's why the allocations from the first year are set based on what we think, when, looking at your bills, what our sales team thinks you're gonna use. And again, the bill's telling you what the prior year usage was, but that is, just cause that's what you used in the prior year, doesn't necess- it's a good predictor of what you would use. But if you install new appliances or, you know, and change the windows or any number of things, your electricity usage could vary year to year. Sorry, I don't know if that answered the question, but that, that's kind of the legit of why we, why the allocation can't be the same.
For, for, for me, I'm still tripping over the, uh, the moving of credits, paying ahead of credits, the possibility of losing credits if they're not used, et cetera, et cetera. And I, 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 I struggle to understand why we just don't get the credits and they're applied to the bill and we're done. Move on. You get them when you got them, you don't get them when you don't got them, and that's the end of it. Brandon, you wanna talk, you wanna reach out, Paul, I'm gonna stop this.
Yeah, I know, sorry.
You're, you're gonna, you're gonna reach out to him or, or me? Who are you referring to?
Yeah, let's touch base in the morning and then Tim and I can touch base sometime this week.
Cause I think we're gonna need more discussion on this, from what I see.
But I'm getting some more, myself. This is, I got it.
Okay, so, yeah, I am gonna wrap this up for now, because it, it seems like my brain is starting to, my hair hurts.
Thank you.
The only way I can put it.
Thank you.
So thank you for your time tonight, Tim.
All right, no, thank you. Uh, I'll share the materials with Brandon and then, um, and, you know, we can follow up from there. All right, take care of you.
Thanks.
What kind of stuff are you such stuff?
Yeah, I don't even wanna talk about this anymore. I'm angry.
Sorry.
Town managers report.
All right, so I have three updates. Perkinsville Center Speed Enforcement. We've received some requests, as you know, to install a digital radar speed sign in Perkinsville Center. Um, we learned that we need a, a section one, 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 one permit. So we have four ones. Uh, we have submitted that permit for approval, and basically what we needed to do on that application is tell them we want to install it and, um, and they either approve it or deny it. We do have a new digital radar sign and it's pending installation for that site. We do have a new digital radar sign and it's pending installation for that site. So once we get the approval, it will be installed there, um, by the 1879 schoolhouse entering Perkinsville. Um, so I'll keep you updated on that. Does anybody have any questions about? Good.
I got a phone call about it, so I didn't respond to that, but you and I talked about it. So it, it, it would be helpful if you could post that information on the website so that people could.
Yes.
If I get another call, you can say, listen, this is what's coming. More like a, a, a public service announcement, you know, we, we received the grant for the speed sign. We're going through the process of trying to put it in, so.
And I spoke to you today. Um, did, Olivia, did you reach out to this person today?
Suzanne Wilder.
I, I guess.
Oops. Yeah, sorry. Yeah.
Back. You emailed her, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know how long the approval process takes. Um, there was also a complaint that we received about the sound of motorcycles going through Perkinsville. Um, and a status update on the study. Um, the state did do a study and we're going to the Traffic Enforcement Committee October 25th. Um, they don't have any speed adjustments that they'd like to. Uh, no speed changes after their study.
Okay.
I believe that it didn't exceed the speed limit by plus or minus five miles per hour as what the letter said.
Eighty, more than 85% of the people were maintaining only five miles above the posted speed limit, but that was for 101, 131, Brandon.
Okay.
They recommended clearing brush from signs in the blind corners. We've been seeing the state out there actually cutting trees the last few weeks. That's why. I think the state recommended it, and all the trees.
For, for those of you who, who are, maybe have some questions, you have, there's a law, it's a federal law by the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration, uh, I think it's 19, the number just happens to be 1978. And that lays forth all of the, um, uh, language for the use of traffic control devices. Uh, and, and there's a statement about, um, um, eighty, about approximately 80% of the people will drive the appropriate speed on a road and therefore they find to, to do something, um, that return legal, normally legal, uh, law abiding citizens into criminals is not their goal. And that's the basis of the law. Um, and why they, they, it's in place. Anyway.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Uh, anybody, any questions? Ray, thank you. You've got something else?
No.
Okay. Um, Brandon, go ahead.
Um, another right, uh, another reminder in regard to the roof replacement site visits. We have those site visits scheduled for this Wednesday. Um, they begin at 9:30 AM at the town garage. And the one at Martin Memorial Hall is at 11 AM and West Weathersfield Fire Station is 11:45. Um, bids are due on November 3rd, no later than 2 PM. The bids must be marked roof replacement project. Um, and at 3 PM, we'll hold a public bid opening and we anticipate discussion and review on November 7th with the board.
Have you, are you aware of a list of contractors coming? Has anybody notified you?
We've received some questions. Um, the latest question was whether there are like actual plans or specs. Uh, and I just released the roof inspection report that the site pool and home inspections conducted. Um, so I think less than a half dozen. So we'll see what, what we get on Wednesday.
Anybody?
Great. Uh, Ray, do you want to go ahead with the compactor and the lottery lane project?
Sure. Um, the compactor is.
Excuse me, Brandon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was told that Mr. Castep was gonna be on at 6:30.
Um, we have these last two updates and then we move on to his.
Oh, sorry. So the compactor is in, and it's just running. Um, it gets a lot more efficient than the old one. It's a lot wider. Um, the only thing we're working on with that priestly is there's a little shelf in the harbor that the trash is getting stuck on. And they're worried about stuff freezing there and it gets cold. So he's gonna look at that, put in another piece of metal to make it so that the trash just slides right into the compactor. Other than that, everything is good. It's running fine. Any questions on compactor?
Is that only gonna be in one place that they're gonna add the metal or, I, I took a look at that. It, 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 it comes down and it goes like this in three places. It gets really flat.
The other three places are gone. There's only one place left. And that's the side closest to the board where you have the trash in. The other ones, they came back and put pieces of metal in.
Oh, already?
Well, with a bunch of stuff.
Oh, okay.
So there's like one shelf at the bottom that they're catching on. Anyway, that should be resolved if they think it's gonna be an issue.
Yep.
Uh, and the concrete is now higher, so it has rained and I've watched it and all the water is draining out of there and there's no water sitting on the compactor anymore. So that's definitely a good thing, safety and sanitation wise. And the rats are gone. Because their homes are gone. So.
Got some town cats?
Um, any questions? Lottery Lane. Uh, I just couldn't call today. I've been in contact all week with Bucky Adams. Um, he is, they're not on site right now because of the amount of water and rain. And it's raining tonight and tomorrow morning. So he's hoping to be back on site, um, early Thursday or Friday, depending on how, I'm helping him monitor the water. It doesn't matter how far down it is. He's waiting for the water to drop enough to get his pumps back in there to catch up. It's gonna take a day or two to pump it down. He's hoping next Monday, if all goes well, he can put the wing walls on the outlet of the culvert and then start backfilling. Oh, oh, the cold culvert. He can't backfill anymore because there's tide ars that go from the wing wall back to the culvert. So he can't put any more dirt on top of it until he gets the wing walls up. Can't put the wing walls up until the water, the pumps can keep up with the water. Get two, two and a quarter inches, right? He's, uh, like I said, hoping to start pumping midday Thursday or, or early Friday, depending on the water rolls in this next rain. So that's being delayed a little bit. But other than that, everything's on track. I did go look at it all weekend. Um, it's taking a lot of water that it shouldn't be taking. It was about half full Friday night after the storm. And no water is backing up in the swamp to make it go all the way down to those two driveways and then across that other culvert that's in down there. That was only running maybe an inch and a half or two inches of water. So that's a, that's a good thing. If we have ice melt and really bad rain, it'll probably still send some water down there, but it'll look good in that second culvert. I think, don't know. It was half full and I looked at it on Friday at the peak of the rain.
Any questions on that?
Once they get the, that, the, the other wall on, they're gonna start backfilling and then the next step project would be the guardrails.
Okay. And you said it's on schedule, so.
Um, well, this, this week is swinging out.
Yeah. Yeah, that's understandable. Any, any questions? Okay. Thanks, Ray. Thanks, Brandon.
That's the last item that I had, but we do have permit sticker policy before the liquor licenses and this gentleman's here, so I don't know if we can take the agenda out of order.
Um.
I, I personally don't care about doing that. I was just confused. Somebody told them I'd be here at 6:30. I didn't see that on the agenda for a time, so.
No, I didn't either. And I wasn't aware that it was gonna be 6:30 either.
Me either.
Originally it was first on the agenda and then we moved some things around.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I, can we move it now? Or just do it?
Yeah, we can move it.
All right, so.
We can do it during the. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna, uh, yeah. Um, we're gonna move to number nine, first class liquor license. Um, ASILNA IW LLC formerly, formerly the Inn at Weathersfield. Uh, and 10 is a third class, uh, license for the same. And 11 is an outside consumption permit again for the same. So we're gonna take all three of these pretty much together. Um, who's that? Floanne?
I just, I just wanted to let you know what you see for a liquor license is extremely different than what you've seen in the past. Because the liquor commission has a brand new way to do liquor this year. So you're not gonna have the same type of liquor license. It's just the bare bones, basically. And you just approve it and then tomorrow I have to do all my stuff with the state.
Okay.
And just to introduce you, this is Mr. Castep. He's, um, the enterprise failed and he will be a new provider, new owner.
Um, so we, we have a, we need a motion to, uh, uh, for the first class liquor license. Silna IW LLC formerly, the Inn at Weathersfield.
I have a question.
Go.
Floanne, when you just said there's a brand new way of doing it, can you enlighten us on what that is? So, I mean, in the past, what we've done is we've taken these one by one and then we would ask the town manager or the chief of police or whatever, anybody's, um, knowledge of any previous um, instances or pri, or problems, if there were any, and they would sign off as well, right? Wouldn't the chief of police sign off on this, Brandon?
I wouldn't have anybody sign up. I always run it by them. I run it by the chief. He said everything is fine.
But that's like hearsay. So usually we have a piece of paper here that says sign.
I haven't ever had anything like that. Unless Brandon's done it, I've never had that in the past. Unless it's been a place that's had a problem. Which I haven't seen.
I've been here almost as long as you, Floanne, and I've sat in on many of these board meetings when that question comes up. I don't want to argue, but it's just truth.
If, if that was the case, Dave, I would have to apply to the liquor license, but I've never done that. So I really don't know unless it's something that I've never seen.
So, yeah, that's good. I, I, I just, uh, two, two things. Uh, one, I, I, I'm not against it, uh, but, uh, have they always had the three, all these, the, the?
Yes.
Okay, so the one that, for outside consumption stuff, uh, they've always had that there, okay? Um, so, um, do, do you want each one separate? Or did you want all three together, Mike?
Um, the permits probably should, should be done separately.
Okay.
In the, in motions.
What, because, um, in order to get to discussion, more so, I would, I, 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 I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion for each one. Do, or do you want to just do one at a time? I'll make a motion for first class license to award, um, Solna IW LCC formerly Inn at Weathersfield, um, for the first class, um, liquor license.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Motion for the third class?
Well, wait a minute. I think we should take these up. The motions on the floor. We can't do a motion on top of a motion.
Okay.
And, and that's what I'm getting. So now we're in discussion. So now I, I, and, and I, I apologize, Mr. Chair, I, I.
You're okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Each, each application has a different number, just so you know.
Yes.
Each application has its own ID number.
Again, I'm sorry. I was reading off of the, uh, I was reading off of the, uh, agenda which doesn't have an application number on it.
Okay, the first one is the outside consumption permit is number 00595.
Okay. That's not the one we're doing.
No.
Okay, the next one is the class hotel license. Application number is 00593.
That says first class, category business first class.
Yeah.
First class hotel. So how can that be a third class license?
The last one is third class.
Okay, so third class, that would be?
00573.
Seven, three.
So the.
First class is.
I think the one I just made the motion for, first class hotel license is 00593.
That's correct.
So I will amend my motion to include the application number.
Thank you.
Of 00593.
Okay, so that's a first class liquor license then.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yep. So, uh.
Okay. Um, I agree with Dave. We've always had some sort of something.
Yes.
That, that's been here in front of us that says, you know, everything's in order. There's no problem.
So that's, uh, what I want to know is.
I, I also understand that this is a change of ownership. Um, so, you know, would that even really apply at this point? Because you're going from one owner to another and they can be completely different in how they run their businesses and what problems you had in one you might not have with another. Dave?
Is there, is there on record either Floanne or, or Brandon, is there, uh, um, uh, an already license in place?
Yes.
Okay, so that, does that not go for a term or does that expire this ownership?
It's, it's, it's licensed now through April 30th until this one gets approved and then it will be moved in.
So April 30th of 2023?
For somebody else.
Under the other name.
Oh, the Inn at Weathersfield.
But is this gonna continue to be named the Inn at Weathersfield?
Yes.
Okay, so the name is staying, except for the ownership is changing. So the, the name on the license.
We've already permitted
Yeah.
these three. I don't want a problem, but I just, these things, I mean, this comes up with fireworks. It comes up with other things beyond liquor. I, I, usually we, we have knowing that the police chief is fine. I, I mean, I don't hear this come across the scanner at all here in town, so.
I live right next door and I, I mean, I hear the outside entertainment. It doesn't bother me anyway.
Does the state, Floanne, does the state view this as the other one has expired under, under new ownership? You just told me the, the one is already valid. I'm wondering why we have it, if there's a valid one in place until April 30th of 2023.
Because there's a huge liability would be my guess.
If I, if I asked that.
And it changes.
Of, okay.
Change, the change in ownership.
I asked that.
It's a different owner, so it has to help.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so it has to.
Okay. All right. So is there any further discussion on, uh, the first class liquor license, 00593? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Third class license, uh, 00573. Do I hear a motion?
I have a question.
Go.
How long, how long did we just vote on this to, to go? One year or does it also expire on April 30th? Is there a state organization old type of a year end or did we just do it until October 17th, 2023?
Because of this being a whole new program, there's, there's a difference in when it, when it actually expires. I have one at my training. It's that it will expire a year from his application. The paper that I have sitting in my hands is known that we go until April 30th, but the others, so that's with the liquor commission.
So, so you're the owner, so you'll have to work with Floanne to make sure on April 30th that all of a sudden the rule didn't change on you.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, very good.
Floanne, do you usually, do you send out notice on those? Is there anything that you're involved with or does, does anybody send out a notice to the people?
I deliver the, I deliver the renewal when I usually get in in December.
Okay.
And then I deliver it when it comes, comes to the board here and then I send it to the state, comes back to me and then I deliver the, I'll, I'll liquorize.
To be honest, I'm glad to hear it's April 30th because I can't imagine having to do this. We usually do them in groups, day after minute works.
Exactly what I, we sent to them at training. This is gonna be a nightmare for boards.
Yeah.
So.
It's gonna be 12 months, right? Everybody, whatever stores sell, gas stations, whatever. Yeah, I know.
Well, his would be new and it would go to April 30th. We're good. All go and then we're gonna move on.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm moving on.
Motion?
Yeah, make a motion to approve the third class. Um, uh, also liquor license, 00573, um, to Solna IW LLC formerly Inn at Weathersfield.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Motion's made and seconded. Third class license. Third class is what? What is that for? That's, uh?
Spirits and hard liquor, right? No, I think one of them is high test, the other's beer.
Beer with wine.
There's differences. That's what I said. Yes. But, yeah, that's.
So, oh, okay. So that's what the third class is?
Yes.
So that's beer in wine. Again, this is a renewal. I'm not aware of any issues.
Oh, it's the opposite.
Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Third class is approved. Outside consumption permit, 0595, 00595.
I'll make a motion to approve the outside consumption permit, application number 00595 for Solna IW LLC formerly Inn at Weathersfield. Second.
Thank you. Any, any discussion?
Nope.
No, just, hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The permits are.
Approved.
All approved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry to hold you up so long.
Sorry, I'm back to you. And, and next time, next time we'll be upstairs maybe, so I don't know, or something.
I'm talking to that.
Thank you.
Welcome to town.
Yes, yeah, welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Floanne.
Thank you, Floanne.
Yes.
Uh, next on the agenda, we're going backwards to the permit sticker policy. Um, excuse me.
No, no, when you get to it, um, my hands up.
It's already raised in his hand.
Uh, yeah, well, uh, I wanna, I want a motion to amend the permit sticker policy to include temporary permits. Do I hear that motion?
No, I'm gonna make a different motion. I make a motion that we table this, uh, amendment until November 7th meeting.
Why?
Um, so we can have our November 1st meeting with the other two towns and we can go through some other changes or modifications or things to the ordinance.
Um, no, um.
Oh, well, hold on. You can't, you can't. Point one, sorry. I made a motion. You have to wait for a second. You can't just say, no, I don't think, maybe. That, that's fine. There probably won't be one. That's fine. There probably won't be one.
Is there a second of the motion?
What was the motion? To table, right?
Just to table to the 7th until after our November 1st meeting.
Your November 1st meeting with your town chief?
Yes, we have, we have a tri-town meeting on November 1st.
I'm in with that, for second, for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion to second to discuss tabling. I guess the discussion on the permit sticker policy.
Well...
I will say, I'm going to open up by saying I do not support the motion. And the reason I don't support the motion is I have no problem waiting to make a decision on the policy change to after, but I want to, I want to at least get into the discussion about the policy change and talk about what's being presented. And you can then take that to your meeting to discuss with the other towns what we're considering. And again, we don't have to, we don't have to vote to accept the policy change tonight. But I do want to get into the discussion of the policy change, and you're stopping that with this motion. That's why I don't support it. Mr. Vice Chair.
Two things. On any, and I don't know that changing the policy, is this a new policy to accept tonight, or is it already existing?
It's an existing that's been
Okay.
That's, it was interim. Changes were already made that were presented from other towns. And those changes include housekeeping stuff.
But I see already now, so you're correct. So I'm looking at dates here, going back to 2010, and so this is an existing policy. A, any other policy change would require three readings and then acceptance, two especially to do this. However, this is a, for me, I'm almost leaning to let it happen as an administrative move without a policy change, because it's a temporary fix to address, and I'm paraphrasing here, cars that are broken, or a rental car, or some sort of a thing where it, I cannot believe that it will be objected to by Redding or West Windsor, because they're treated the same, they'll be offered the same type of a temporary fix. So it could be an administrative, it's saving the people that work at the transfer station, a lot of headaches. It's going to cure some, a little bit of a problem. So I don't know that it needs to be addressed in policy. If it is addressed in policy, it's got to go to three board meetings, but I do agree with Paul on one thing about incorporating, and I don't know whether Redding or West Windsor knows about this. Have you reached out to them, Brandon?
I have, I have not, honestly, I didn't think the temporary permit sticker would be of issue. However, there's some other things in here that need to be addressed, such as references to the solid waste fee assessment policy that may also, because of this tri-town partnership, need to be amended.
But let's not lose focus that we're talking about stickers, temporary stickers.
Right now, we're talking about one thing. Let's not drift into other policy changes. And, and point of word, Paul's point, we're really dealing with right now a motion to?
Table.
Table.
Yep.
Paul?
Just quickly, too, this is an ordinance that we've got? This is an ordinance?
It's not a policy?
No, it, you got to go by what the definition is. An ordinance, right, Brandon?
This is a policy. This is a new policy. That's an ordinance that reference. So we're dealing with a policy that we put into place, and then we're dealing with a...
An ordinance within the policy.
Yes.
Right, and we made, we already put that ordinance into place, and pursuant of, I think it's, what is it, 24, 1972? It's about ordinances, and you don't necessarily need three readings for an ordinance amendment. Am I right on that one?
I'd have to research it. I think for right now, for the purpose of dealing with an issue that could reoccur until we meet with our other three towns on November 1st, I think I will allow a temporary permit as an administrative.
As Mr. Fuller has stated.
And then, once we meet with the other towns on the 1st, we'll come back with
The full policy.
Whether it's consensus, or if there's other changes that need to be made.
Right.
I agree 100%. Really nice eventually to get it into a policy, so that we can hand the policy to people who have questions. Have the employees have a policy that they're following instead of an administrative temporary thing. But that's a stopgap, and then we can get it, make the three readings, or whatever you got to do down the road.
Well, I was, I was getting ready to say, I really hate politics. I want something in place here, so this stuff stops. I mean, it's happened. The people that we know have lived in town, you know, I mean, years. And I tried to run them down, to help them out.
Here you go again. Kelly, last meeting, you said, and you didn't take Candy's hat. He hasn't lived that down. Anytime he's bringing it up, he says, but I tried.
He feels guilty.
Exactly right. He feels guilty. Exactly right.
I think you have to guess. If you administer the policy that you just mentioned, you solve that problem instantly, and then you can do a policy change later on, and it would serve it, take care of it perfectly.
Yeah, I agree with Paul that we should include the other three towns, and I kind of jumped the gun with the policy.
Where does the motion on the floor stand?
The motion on the floor is a motion to table. Where does that stand with you right now?
I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine doing this. I wanted to, sorry, more prove a point that we, and I'm on my soapbox now. We do knee-jerk reactions to things that happen, because people get upset, and we don't look at the whole thing as a whole and go through it, and we get ourselves in trouble. And there's some key points in this ordinance that we, we're not even following through with right now, and some that I tell people, better come in and get their sticker before we add a price to it here. And nobody reached out to the other two towns, so that was more of my thing. I'm okay if we rescind it, and if you want to just put something in place, I'm not against it. I just want to do this right again.
Oh, I agree. I agree, but I think my statement at the beginning was that I didn't care if we didn't make a decision tonight, but I wanted to talk about it, and now we have.
Yeah, which is fine.
So, you know, so you want to, you want to?
I'll rescind it. I'm fine with that if you want.
Motion to table is rescinded. Mr. Second over here, you're okay with that?
Sorry.
So that's, okay. Is there any further discussion necessary at this time on this policy?
Do we need a motion now, or can you just administrate it?
No, I'm just taking the agenda item. It says vote to amend the sticker policy to include temporary permits. We're not going to have a motion on that tonight. So let's, we'll just, we'll turn it over to the town manager at this time, and we'll continue this to a later date, Brandon.
Okay, that sounds fair.
Okay, everybody's okay with that?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Late homestead penalty discussion. Heather, I understand is not here tonight?
Yeah, she wasn't able to make it. She had a more, more of an immediate. Her attendance was required elsewhere, and it was more of an emergency than...
And did she submit a statement?
She did, and she asked me to read it into the record. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Please do. This is a statement from resident regarding the homestead penalty, tax penalty, and it's a discussion on that penalty and possibly reducing that penalty. Overend?
The pandemic has had a tremendous impact on all of us, and that includes property owners and people who assist with preparing tax returns and filings. Some things that normally would have been taken care of properly ended up slipping through the cracks because of the overwhelming workload and issues we're all dealing with. I would respectfully ask for a one-time waiver of any penalties associated with the late homestead filing for myself and other Weatherfield residents in consideration of the circumstances.
Okay. You want to take that, Brandon, to start it off?
So we've had several residents who filed their homestead declarations late. When a homestead is filed late, the resident is billed a penalty. The penalty is set at 8%. In 2017, the board waived this fee. In 2018 only, it was set to 3%. In 2019 and 2020, it did not apply because the homestead was not higher than the non-residential rate. Last year, the board voted to change it from 8% to 3% after the bills were mailed and we sent revised tax bills. In the case the board votes to move the penalty from 8% to 3%, we will need to mail revised tax bills to all who received a penalty for filing their homestead declarations late. So my recommendation would be to reduce the 8% penalty to 3%, and to issue revised tax bills to all that are affected, which is about 40 residents.
Do I hear that motion?
No. I have a question.
A question would come under discussion.
Well, no, hold it. I'm a complaintant then.
Okay.
Oh, boy. Am I recognized?
Yes.
I have a lot of papers here. I'm one of those 40, and I want to be on the record as objecting to this penalty. I've got my tax bills here, and I've got a lot of them. I've got, first of all, I'd like to say that residents are, regardless of whether you file H-122 or not on time, you're still given a tax bill and mailed that one, and that's still due on the quarter that it is. They plug in the numbers, which, which was plugged in for me, so they take, they take the grand list, and then they use the, I've got my copy of my 2223 bill right here in front of me. On my home, they use the non-homestead education rate. I have no idea why. It's plugged into this. It is my homestead. And that is mailed out to be paid the first quarter on August, which I did. So it's not like, if you don't file your H-122, it's not like you don't get a tax bill. You do get a tax bill. And they assume some things, apparently, because they give it to you.
They, who's they? I'm sorry, Dave.
The town.
The town.
The town. And all of the listed, the general fund, the special articles and whatnot, all the rates are calculated out, and then they associate it with the grand list, and then bingo, you get your quarterly payments. So it's not like, so I specifically did not file an H-122, because you've heard me talk before that I have a longstanding, since 2020, debate going on, and I filed a formal complaint against the current use department, because I'm trying to add acreage onto the home farm. They gave that application, if you can believe this, to another David Fuller located in the state. I filed that complaint with the head of the tax department, who's, who's now kind of interested in it. But I did file my, I asked for a six-month extension on my taxes, and that's what I wanted to do as the farm and personally. I don't know how deep you want to get into this, but I did file, I did have to file an H-122, and I did on, on September 15th along with my taxes, and that's what I wanted to do, which generated this new tax bill that says that I owe $321 now for a late penalty fee from the town. I started doing the math, and throughout all of my service with the town, I understood, because I've never filed an H-122 late before. I always thought that the 8% penalty that was affected by taxes was when someone did not pay their tax bill after June 30th of any given tax year. I thought that was the 8% penalty. I didn't think that it was a penalty dealing with that you didn't file your homestead between April 15th and October 1st, which is, which you can do. So the state penalized me $15 for being late. The town initially threw an email, and I've gone back and forth with the office, said there was 37, apparently four more have come about that filed their late H-122, gains $11,000 in income by doing this. I asked the town manager who was in control of this, and he told me, and that person gets $25 an hour. I started doing a whole lot of math. For 41 properties, it's an average, to gain $11,000, it's an average cost of income of $268 for each of those 41 properties that happened to be late. But you only get a $15 penalty from the state by doing it. They're doing all the calculating. They take my tax, they take my tax, the income tax filing that I do, and that's how it's associated to go with the H-122, because you have to put your income down to the homestead. That would be each of the 41 properties currently, if this 8% penalty stands, 10.7 hours of that person's time would be devoted to correct each tax bill. I cannot believe that it takes 10.7 hours of undevoted time for anybody here, including Brandon, to cure that one tax bill. If it's dropped to 3%, the 41 properties would generate $4,125. It still would be $100 each, or four hours, one half of one day of the person who's now in charge, to do one tax bill. I'm going to make a motion that this get dropped to zero for this year for the, for the reasons that Heather Hartford also did, because of a $15 penalty that I already observed from the, from the town, and that I read through the emails in 2017 and 18, that it dropped in those years dramatically, and I respectfully disagree with the town manager's statement. The reason why we didn't do it in 2021, that we didn't have to do it, because we, something to do with the homestead and non-homestead education tax rates, one was higher than the other. I'm going to show you my tax bill right here on my property, and I have no idea why I pay an amount for each on my one property. They have, you can't make this up. I pay a non-homestead rate and a homestead rate on my homestead. So.
Paul?
So, did you officially make a motion?
I will.
Okay, so first and foremost, I'm going to ask that Dave is not part of this, because he is part of, so please, hold on, because I'm not against you.
No, I'm going to respond to that.
Well, I'm not against you. I'm not against.
No, no, no.
I'm not, I'm not against you.
I get it, but I'm going to respond.
Hold on. I'm willing to make the motion that we drop, drop it to zero. I was, I wanted to do that. I was looking at doing that anyways. It's what the letter asked for. With everything that's been going on, and this is not, because Dave just brought this up, what I want to do is, I I just want to make sure, Dave has, Mr. Fuller has a vested interest in this, and I, and I want to make sure that that's not construed anywhere in here. I do not. My bill, I don't have any of those problems online, so I'm going to make the motion that we drop it to zero.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Discussion?
Yes.
Go.
Two points. I have, I've spoken to you about it. I think maybe you have raised the idea about potentially, and Heather also did, because she asked me about it, and, and she had heard, she works for SRDC, Springfield Regional Development, and I'm surprised she didn't write it in that, that line, because she told me she wasn't going to be here about some type of either state or federal COVID money. My point is not to lose the town money. This is going to take away some money from the general fund.
That will become a separate issue from this motion.
Okay. Second, I've sat right here on this board many times where I've shared your, shared your view about self-interest. However, there have been past board members that have voted, and there is a policy about voting, because a couple of board members have sat right here and voted on their own, their spouse worked for the town, and they voted on their own healthcare decisions right here. And that was in the, in the, in the family dollar amount.
I see. Let me take that for a second. There is language that allows board members to participate in decisions that affect the entire town as a whole, and you are, you are a member, such as zoning bylaws, tax laws, those types of things. I think what you're, you picked a perfect example, because a board member sitting here voting on a compensation package, their spouse... a compensation package that their spouse receives is a definite, in my opinion, conflict of interest. Voting on a tax policy or a tax policy change that affects basically everybody, not really the same thing. I'm fine with you participating.
I, I raised that issue at the table because I was a co-member, and that person said, no, I don't think so. So there is, there, there is some weight in that the person, person having to step down themselves. I don't think you can be forced to execute.
And let me, let me rephrase what I said. I, I, I'm not, I wanted to make sure that any motion that we made at this table, because I'm in agreement, that didn't, it didn't have any negativity, that's all. I, I'm perfectly fine with him making a decision, especially if you are too.
And I appreciate you bringing it up so that we are at least having that discussion about it.
Yeah.
That, that lets people know that we're aware of what's going on around us, and, and we're careful about these things.
After listening, I'm not sure that I have to.
No, and I don't think you need to.
I'm not sure you do either. We have a motion, we have a second.
Now, on that discussion, I do want to question how, how is the town not going to be affected monetarily? Then obviously, we won't have this money. But then again, what, what, what is our?
I, I spoke with Brandon about using COVID funds, the similar funds that we use for the small business grants and stuff. We still have money there. And, and use that, I, I said to Brandon, let's take the money from that and, and, and pay this and, and take it to zero.
Would that be a second, a separate motion? Or do you want it encompassed into this?
Should, should that be a separate motion, Brandon, you think? Or you want to put it all in one?
I, I think, you know, just moving the penalty to zero for this year and then coming back after I quantify an amount.
So separate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I guess I'm a little confused. This homestead declaration, is this something that everyone gets? Or is this just people who have a pro, extra property?
Not extra property, property. Anybody that has property.
So it's on my bill that I get, no matter what?
It's actually not on your bill. It's, it's part of your tax file.
Yeah. Yeah, you file it with your tax person or whatever.
Yeah. You take your tax bill.
So can I say you just didn't fire your taxes in time? Is that what you, is that what happened?
Yes. I did it on purpose. I went, I went through it because of the fight with current use.
Yeah, he, I've been, I've been where, where he's been.
Well, I just, I just wanted to know where, and is this, the money that we're revising or that he's needing to make up, is this money that we already knew that we would be getting because these people didn't pay it?
Unfortunately, when we develop the budget, we.
You included that?
We review past penalty trends to come up with an amount of money as.
You shouldn't be doing that.
We do, we do.
I know you do.
Otherwise, we'll have surpluses.
It's, it's delinquent tax anticipations, which, which, it's a common.
And the reason you do that, Kelly, is because otherwise, it's going to come in, and then we'll have a surplus, and you try to balance.
It's better to have the surplus and have a deficit.
Huh?
Better to have a surplus than a deficit.
I don't know. I don't know what's better because you overtax if you.
I do, I just want to remind you, yes, I knew that, well, no, I did not know that there was going to be a penalty of eight percent generated.
Well, I was just.
So I was working with the office upstairs, talking all about this going on for the H one twenty-two. The office ran a test for me about what I was anticipating going to get and how the current use was going to play out, if it was worth it.
Yeah.
I'm pretty certain that I probably should have been notified. Wait a minute, Dave, if you don't file your H one twenty-two, you know you're going to get an eight percent penalty?
Yeah.
I mean, because I already, I'm telling you, I've served you a long time.
Is that something we, we tell the people? Where does that come from?
No, because I always thought this eight percent penalty was after you didn't pay your taxes at the end of the year.
At the end of the fiscal year.
Not the H one twenty-two. At June thirtieth of every year, if I owe a hundred dollars and I only pay ninety, I owe eight percent penalty on the unpaid balance.
On the, yeah.
July first.
Right, right off.
Correct.
Well, the only reason why I asked is because he must have already known the people that didn't pay or filed late in order to assume that he's going to have that money.
No, because our budgets are long gone, and the deadline is April fifteenth, and it's already, it's, it's being, it's, it's too late for the warning. The warning would be the end of January for us to sign. The town meeting, which is the voters vote on the first Monday or Tuesday of March.
I think you lost me.
Okay, but.
To, to have the money, he's saying.
It's literally a projection.
He wouldn't, he wouldn't have known the amount.
Oh, okay. I got you.
The people or the individuals, he just, he goes on past years that there's roughly been this much.
Well, I wanted to know how he knew that, that you were going to owe X amount of dollars and so and so.
He didn't know. He didn't know.
Within the, within the budget, he, he projects a.
A certain amount each year.
Based on, based on.
Past precedents.
Previous years.
Like credits.
Yeah, the shell game. Okay, so we do, we have a motion on the floor, and, and that motion is to, to move the.
Further.
The, the eight percent penalty to zero. The motion recommended here was to three percent. This is moving to zero.
I have one more thing. So there may be folks out there who received this bill that have already paid the penalty. So in those cases, we would issue a.
Credit.
Credit. And we'd issue them back a check for the penalty. So is that going to be the case here? I would recommend that it is if we're doing it for these forty unpaid.
And that needs to be included in the motion?
I would believe so.
Okay.
So let me, let me rephrase the motion that, that I want to make a motion to reduce the tax to zero percent for FY twenty-three. I'm sorry, penalty, sorry, penalty, to zero percent for the FY twenty-three. And to anybody that's paid this penalty, to issue them a credit and, and send them a check.
And basically revise the forty.
Yeah, and revise, revise the.
The only thing I want changed in that motion is I want it to clarify that we are talking about the homestead declaration's late fee.
Yep, home, homestead.
We're not talking about the eight percent penalty on not paying your taxes.
Right.
This is only for the homestead penalty.
Declaration, late fee, reduced penalty to zero percent for FY twenty-three.
And include, and include a credit for those who have already paid.
People that might have already paid, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? Uh, the second, okay with that? Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion?
Brandon has to hand up.
Well, and basically, is it okay just to write a note with this motion so that they understand why they're getting a credit? Board voted to reduce it to zero.
I think you can handle that.
Yep.
You need help, let us know.
Might need to be.
Olivia, could you help him out, please?
I'll get on it.
Sorry.
The same thing just happened with the water department.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
Yes.
We have, we have a vote that is three to one, with, and the one being an abstention. Thank you, Mr. Fuller, for that. The motion carries. We will, we will wait for the town manager to submit numbers before we address the transfer funds from the ARPA. Brandon, please keep that as a future agenda item, so we'll get, we'll get to that when we have those numbers. Okay, next up on the agenda. Ray, you're up. Now, budgets, highway budget proposal. We, we do have the budget proposal narrative in here. I want to remind people that this is just receiving the budget. If you have questions, please write them down. We are going to get to all questions. We are going to get to debate and discussion, but that's not the purpose tonight. The purpose tonight is to just receive the budget from, from the department head. And it is what it is, and we aren't going into, into any discussion about these budgets until we have them all. Then we'll know. Know. Ray, go.
I have no discussion because we're not having a discussion, so I'm just presenting you guys.
You're just presenting it, bro.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment about this.
Okay.
Okay, good. I like the print.
I can see it.
Thank you for making the print so that we don't have to squint. Oh, it's really good. Really good. Yes, exactly.
Okay, I like it. Go, you go.
No, my, my question is more for you than you can present back. I was just curious, when we have the personnel expenses in these, I would just like to know the, the amount of personnel. In other words, like the transfer station, maybe two or whatever, the highway, how many, and so on. That's all.
Okay.
That's all. Just in a notes section, I, to know how many employees are in, when you say personnel budget, how many employees is that?
Oh, I see what you're saying. In, in the line down here, just in parentheses, put the number of employees.
Regular wages.
What the total is that's associated with that line of employees.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Ray, go.
I have nothing.
Thank you.
I just, I'm supposed to just put up the budget, I did, I did.
Well.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so last year's budget and this year's budget, I think we have a narrative here. The difference is, is how much in your, in your.
I'm asking, okay. So I'm asking for the same amount of money. It's actually one hundred and seventy-five dollars less than last year. But the tax need is more because last year, we used fund balance to offset the tax rate. So we actually had a negative, we showed a negative increase in the highway budget. This year, instead of putting seventy-six thousand dollars in the budget from fund balance, it's been recommended to do, what's it, thirty-nine thousand, Ray?
Yeah, thirty-eight.
Forty thousand dollar difference then. To get the same amount of money we asked for last year, it's going to cost forty thousand dollars more in new tax dollars to create that money. That's, that's in a nutshell.
Okay.
Do you want me to go through the budget?
No.
Yes, please.
Okay.
We said we weren't discussing it.
We're not, we're not discussing. We're not. They're just, they're presenting.
So like Ray was saying, the tax need for this department will increase if approved from nine thirty to nine fifty-nine. And that's basically because we use seventy-six thousand in fund balance in FY twenty-three to reduce the tax need for this department. So we're looking to use thirty-eight thousand in fund balance this year and the remainder of fund balance next year to prevent significant tax spikes. State aid to highway, we budgeted one forty-three in FY twenty-three, and it's actually coming in at one fifty-two, seven hundred and sixty-eight. So we did increase state aid to highway by approximately ten thousand dollars. Going on to expenditures, the highway department currently has seven full-time positions, including the highway superintendent. The proposal here is to eliminate one position and, and increase the existing employee wages by ten percent. Alternative practices would include a wage adjustment in FY twenty-three and a lower COLA in FY twenty-four. Following several attempts to advertise the highway positions, we have received no interest at this time, which could mean that there's a competitive market out there for highway workers. Overall, personnel is proposed to decrease by one percent or five thousand ninety-three dollars. And that's due to the elimination of one position in absorbing those increases. Office expenses, we locked in our IT services for five years with a one percent inflationary increase last year. So we've only increased that by one percent. Utilities, as we've just seen presented, we need some more time to determine what utilities will be next year for the highway department. We're not sure exactly how to budget for that this time. Highway garage and truck expenses, we see, from what we're seeing so far this year, which could change next year, we've increased this by nine percent. Gasoline, after we reviewed, reviewed his gasoline consumption, we're increasing this by seventeen percent based on the current prices of gas. All of their accounts are level funded. Road material and repairs, we've watched salt, we haven't expected the full salt line each year. So we are decreasing the salt line this year after seeing four years of pricing and use analysis. Paving repairs, we're proposing to increase paving repairs by twenty-five hundred to repair more roads in Weathersfield. All of their accounts are level funded. Debt service, the twenty eighteen plow truck was paid off, and the new truck payment is seventeen thousand dollars less annually. The greater lease, we're proposing to level fund this to pay two years of greater payments. So if you go to page four, excuse me, three, three or four, under debt service, we budgeted thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the greater for FY twenty-three. What that did this year is it paid two payments on the greater. We're proposing to keep that the same and make two more greater payments next year, which would pay off the greater two years earlier or in five years. Fund balance and reserves, transfer to highway equipment, we propose to transfer fifteen thousand of the annual savings from the twenty eighteen plow truck to highway equipment reserves. And that's, that's the highway budget.
And I do have questions. I know everybody's going to have questions. We're not answering any questions tonight.
Just logistic questions. That's all I got. When you pass these out next time, can you print that synopsis here so you don't have to go back and forth so I can?
Yes.
That's all.
As I said, I have questions, and I, and I'm marking some of these questions, and we're going to get into those questions. We are going to have the questions. We're going to go through that process. But there are some things that are not known completely yet. And I want to see the whole budget before we start getting into discussions about where to make changes, what to accept, you know, what we can do, what we can't do, and, and I want to, I want to see the whole thing first. I'm going to, I'm going to be very cautious.
Go ahead, cut me off if you have to. I have two philosophical things. Number one.
They're not questions, they're philosophy.
Yeah, well, no, 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 because this is really, these are really important. Number one, I mean, I've already had lots of discussions, and so has everybody with John Arison up at the state, who says that there's a significant amount of state funds that are available. So I'm wondering out loud whether you keep up to date on that because I see that you've upped this. Not, not as much as I thought. I'm talking about revenue. I'm talking about non-tax revenue. Don't, don't argue, right? I'm not getting into a budget thing. Talking about the availability of state funds up here. So the second thing is, can you, can you, for the upcoming meetings, also clarify what is allowed for the, and I think it's pretty loose description for the ARPA funds?
Yep.
Because I just learned something that I didn't really keep track of. The greater payment, for instance, is thirty-two thousand eight hundred dollars, and you're asking for a property tax raise of twenty-eight. That's pretty close. If we injected some ARPA funds that are going to be left over to pay for a long-term. It's not a fix, it's a machine.
To pay it.
I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there because it's more of a general statement. Because we are going to have to, the ARPA funds, I mean, the last I knew, needed to be delegated by, what was it, like the end of two thousand twenty-four? So I know roofs, I know buildings, things like that. But I'm just, I'm not saying any.
Ray, Ray, you put your hand up.
I just want to clarify, the greater payment is actually sixteen thousand. We're making a double payment, so that's why.
That was, that was clear in the presentation.
But in this presentation, you, you, you have to use property taxes. Well, what I'm suggesting.
And actually, my question is going to come right back to this topic, the greater. But that's where my question is, and I'll, I'll.
I just picked that as an example, though. There may be other things that are located in the highway budget that could qualify for some kind of property tax deferment that'd be used availability for the ARPA funds.
Brandon, would you look into that?
I picked, I picked that out.
I can answer the question now.
Okay.
So yes, we can use.
It's a loan payment.
We can use the ARPA funds for that.
It's a lease, yes.
Okay. And we'll, we'll get deeper into that discussion when we get to the discussion of the budgets. This is just a presentation.
Is that a comment on the philosophy that I'm using to create the budget? The greater has a seven-year payment. If we can get it paid off in five years, the town will have a huge opportunity to trade it in in five years. And still, sorry, still have a two-year warranty left, and that thing will be worth a lot of money. And it would be very cheap to trade it in at that time. That's the goal.
And, and that's what I want to hear from you, from any department head, is, is what, why they're planning and what their, what their planning is. And that's fine. I have a question, which I'm not going to ask until we get to the discussion of the budgets. Now, moving on to the next budget.
All right, let's, I was wondering, what's the next budget?
The next budget is the solid waste, which Ray is also.
Oh, I was already headed up.
Thank you. Oh, listen, I know this is a little different, but what I'm, what I'm really just trying to do is, before we get to. before we get too deep into the discussions and decisions and, and where things are at, I want all of these things in front of us, so we can look at the totals and know what they are. I, I just think it makes more sense. It, it's, I mean, I don't think we should be approving a budget before we know what the next three are. That's all I'm saying.
Don't want to approve them.
Go, go, go ahead, Ray.
I just wanna stress that my goal is to put ourselves in a financial position where we have the opportunity to take advantage of this greater, for instance, or anything else. That's, that's what I aspire, I'm concerned, that's my job, to give you guys those opportunities.
Yes.
Whether you act on them or not, it's up to you at that time. I just wanna make it so it's available.
You, you will understand my question when we get to that part of the thing, and I do appreciate you, what you're doing, so go ahead with the, uh, solid waste.
I'm gonna go ahead?
Yes, please.
Okay. So Ray and I held several meetings in regard to the FY twenty-four solid waste budget. Um, the revenue at the transfer station hasn't, the revenue need at the transfer station has increased, and town assessments have increased as a result. Um, variable revenues have been set to a three percent increase, which is an estimate that requires additional research and analysis. What I'm basically saying is, um, I need to review our variable expenses in more detail before I can actually put expenditures and revenues into the budget. Um, and to do that, it's gonna take time to review our tipage and trucking and fuel increases and seeing what our two contracted potential haulers see in July, which are estimates. For our fixed expenses, we have a personnel cost of living adjustment request of ten percent. Office expenses, insurance information is still pending, so this item is level funded until that information is received, I'm hoping to have it within thirty days. IT services was not entered in FY twenty-three, so this adjustment is being made in FY twenty-four. The account will be overspent in FY twenty-three. Highway service and support is adjusted based on highway personnel COLA request. Um, to- town office support is adjusted at seven percent. Tipage and recycling, again, additional research and analysis is pending, similar to variable revenues, we're entering a placeholder of three percent here for now. Debt service, this is why, this is one of the main reasons why the assessments are increased, increasing. The trash compactor loan has been added under debt service, the payment is considered a fixed expense, which adds to the reasoning for a higher fixed revenue need. Principal is set at ten thousand one hundred and thirty annually, while interest is set at twenty-one twenty-seven for FY twenty-four. However, interest will decrease as the principal decreases each year, and that two thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars is interest gained in the general fund. So it seems the interest, since we took out the loan from our reserves, that twenty-one twenty-seven is being paid back to our reserves as an interest payment. Um, for example, in, as you know, as principal decreases, interest decreases, so in FY twenty-five, interest will be eighteen twenty-three compared to three hundred and four in FY thirty, which is our last payment. So what I'm saying is, I, I need more time to review our variable revenues and expenses to put in, and then also a cost of living adjustment impact study.
Careful, Ray, go.
Did I get it? Same question that I just posed to the highway, so I would like it if Paul and Brandon, when you're talking with Wes Windsor and Redding, um, I don't know what funds either one of those towns got from ARPA.
Yep.
Um, I'm wondering out loud whether or not you guys could really, really hit a home run if you struck a deal and it came up to the three towns to jointly pay for this, um, um, compactor and work that we've just done, to avoid, I mean, you talked about a long-term fix, I mean, that's probably a ten-year, uh, thing. Uh, a fix.
That's a good idea.
Rather than, uh, ask more money either from punch tickets or some other source of revenue, and, you know, sticker or whatever. So, uh, that's, I think that's a good deal. I was gonna ask about reci- what is the trend of recycling or trash?
That's what we're reviewing right now.
I know, that, that's gonna be a real hard one, so, yeah.
Can I have yours?
No, I'm just, I'm pointing, 'cause.
It's, it, it is going up because the cost of fuel is going, has increased, so.
Right.
The projections are the metal prices are also gonna go up, hopefully.
When do you guys meet? The first of November?
First of November.
So you're coming right up?
Yeah, we do have an agenda that is online, if, if you want, and, and by all means, if anybody has any questions.
But you could, but you could reach out to the, to, uh, Bob Allen and the administrator at Wes Windsor now and ask them, throw the question out there about ARPA funds and prorate it to our use.
Yep.
I think it'd be beneficial for all of us.
They don't have an administrator right now, so it's just.
Wes Windsor's board?
Yeah, they're seeking one.
Okay.
So, my question is logistics, we just covered, we just covered, uh, those two anyways. Um, and, and forgive me, it's, it's not about either one of these, but, um, there was a, uh, Kelly did send an email, I don't know if others saw it, about, um, open enrollment and, and insurance, um, and I think in past years, we've kind of included, um, uh, wage increases and the insurance around the same conversation, um, is that something we should be doing sooner than later, especially if we're trying to put into?
That's why I'm trying to get this process.
This stuff, yeah, okay.
So that we can get there. That, that's gonna come.
Okay.
That's all gonna, but, but, but hopefully we'll have all of these budgets when we start talking about that stuff, and it'll make a lot more sense to us, I think, moving forward.
I just don't wanna lose the.
Well, I know the open enrollment is open for us at school.
Yeah, right, absolutely.
We don't have any rates yet for the new, for what it's gonna cost, but it's open, so.
I got, I got my new rates, Ray.
Insurance information was handed out to employees in the highway garage, so they're aware of the habit, so we shouldn't have the issue last year where they didn't get anything until you guys were talking about it, so.
Oh, it's even better.
MVP had announced a long time ago, right? Isn't it like eighteen point nine or something? I mean, it's just on the twenty.
Is that who we use?
No, the school you, yeah.
We use Blue Cross.
Right, the sco- the town, well, I mean.
We went to MVP a few years ago.
Right, all right, thank, thank you.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
You guys are.
So.
Must've got my email.
Can I release my health insurance findings, or?
Um, I actually would like you, because you said you wanted to go through it again, I would prefer to wait until you get to go through it again and verify it.
What do you define as findings?
Uh, it, it's, it's numbers, i- i- he, he's running numbers on the increase for healthcare, and he has a number, but I don't wanna enter, enter into that discussion.
No, 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 I meant, I didn't know if you were talking about carriers. There's only two, right? I mean, it's only Blue Cross and MVP.
Blue Cross MVP, yeah. Um, but, a- again, we're, we're gonna get there, I, yeah, ta- take your time on that, there's no rush to get there. Um, I, I'm aware of what those numbers are, and it, it's, it's, uh, actually, you'll, you'll be impressed.
Yes, do you, like, maybe, I don't know, is anybody aware of, of, um, is the, is the schools completely separate from the towns as far as working together on that go? So I wonder whether the town could reach out to the school, or maybe you can't, uh, maybe there's a law that says, I'm sorry, that's the Vermont School Board Association, and we're, you know, we're.
It's separate. Schools and the towns.
There is, I know they're a union, so I, so I didn't know that. I didn't know whether or not we could also go over there and say, hey, are you getting a, um, cheaper rate with Blue Cross? Could, could we ask, or, or is that just not possible?
Oh, we could actually get that. We, we can get, we can get the same thing that you just got here from MVP.
No, I'm talking about like hooking arms with the school, so to speak, because they've got, you know, probably fifty or seventy-five employees, and maybe they're a bigger, or the WSSU, which is even hundreds of employees on healthcare, they may be able to gain a competitive advantage on a plan, that's all, that's where I was.
Ours is through the whole state.
Yeah, I know, it's a big, it's a big.
Yeah, I see where you're going.
Why not?
Yeah, you wanna get on the train, yeah, because it's cheaper.
It's separate than, yeah.
You're also building a union over there, too.
Yeah.
Everybody, though.
But I will look into it, just to get an answer.
Thank you, Ray. And, and thank you to everybody, um, I, I, the, the philosophies.
Steve stole my word.
The way, absolutely, I did.
I'm gonna be Blake Shelton.
No, I'm no, I, no, those, those are really valid points to make now, and I appreciate them, Paul. Paul and Ray and, and Dave, uh, so thank you. Um, hopefully this'll work, and we'll probably need some tweaking, 'cause it's a little different than we've done in the past. Hopefully it'll, it'll make it easier, that's the goal, is to try to make this process easier. And if it doesn't, I won't do it again, let somebody else. Um, okay, so that takes care of that, um, we, we have the, uh, transfer to reserves. Ray, thank you very much for getting this done for us, I'm, I'm, like I said, I was trying to move us into this early this year, the budgets process. And I apologize for that, too, 'cause I shifted gears on you there.
And Ray.
Yes, thank you to Brandon. Um, we, we need to vote to, uh, transfer reserve accounts. We have a statement from Mr. Hire. Has everybody had a chance to go through that?
Mm-hmm.
And, Dave, did you?
Yeah, I got it right in front of me.
Is that with that, okay.
Yep.
Um, so, um, Brandon, what are we looking for here? Uh, I don't, vote to transfer twenty-five hundred, that's a police cruiser.
That's a separate.
That's a, that's a separate issue.
That's not Steve Hire.
So.
I know.
What this is, is the, in Steve Hire and the auditors, and I, after meeting with Steve, I, I agreed that we need to, in order for our audit to be complete, so that we can get the audit report, the board either has to decide to transfer or to not transfer. Um, most of this stuff is normal, actually, it's all very normal annual.
Yeah, I'm not sure the board needs much of an explanation on what we're doing or where it's going. I think what we need to know is the numbers.
Do you want, well, he's got it, but, so, okay.
Go ahead, Dave.
Um, well, he's got them all listed separately, to, you know, the vault fees, computerization, preservation.
There is a net total down here.
Yeah, at the bottom. So, why don't I make a motion that we transfer, uh, the amount of monies that are noted through the treasurer, Steve Hire's, uh, notes here, to the res- appropriated, appropriate reserve accounts. I'll, I'll list them all out.
Totalling three thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty cents.
Well, but he's also asking for a subtraction from the unspecified reserves, I'm not sure, I, we may need a, uh, I think we'd need a statement about what the use of that seven thousand fifty-one dollars was for. He's asking for it to be taken out.
So that's, so this year, the board authorized some of the repair work in the basement, um.
Okay, good.
Be transferred from the rainy day reserve.
Okay, good, that, at least we knew, okay.
Yeah, it's in, it's in his letter.
Yeah, okay, I didn't see that part.
Mix of the last order.
Okay, so, two thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents to be located in the vault fees, reserve account. Four thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars for municipal record computerization, reserve account. Two thousand seventy-seven dollars for land and vital records. Thirty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents to Parks and Recreation. Seven hundred and seventy dollars to be set aside for reappraisal. These are all reserve accounts. One thousand and fifty dollars, what does ARN stand for?
Aid to Residents in Need.
Okay. Did you get that, Charles?
Yes, I recorded it.
Aid, okay, aid to residents in need, three hundred and twenty-six dollars to rabies, and a negative seven thousand fifty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents to be taken out of the unspecified reserve, the rainy day fund, for a net total of three thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty cents.
Do I hear a second?
To be transferred to reserve, uh, reserve accounts noted.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Um, the, do, do we need to do the unspecified reserve as a separate?
No.
Brandon?
No. It's fine.
I just wanted to make sure I understood how that, 'cause that's coming out of the rainy day and actually back into the general.
Yes.
So it's not like it's transferring from the general into.
But it got spent down here.
Yeah.
And there's a balance, which is important to note, at one twenty-six forty left.
My point is that most of these are transferring from the general fund into a reserve account specified, but this one is different, it's coming out of a specified account into the general fund, so it's kind of a different type of transfer.
Yeah.
Should it, it shouldn't be separate, no?
No, I think it's fine.
You're okay, it makes, as long as it makes sense.
And the treasurer outlined it, so.
Okay.
He's.
Yes.
Yep.
All right, that's it for discussion for me. Any discussion? Paul? David? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you all.
Motion to approve two thousand five hundred dollars to the Police Department, uh, Police Cruiser Reserve Fund.
Do I hear a second?
From, from the SIU grant.
Wait.
Yeah, motion in a second. Discussion.
If you could amend the, the motion to state, vote to transfer twenty-five hundred from the FY twenty-three Police Department budget to the Police Cruiser Reserves. And the reason we're doing that is because although the transfer is taking place due to the SIU grant, we spent the SIU grant in the Police Department budget, so it's an accounting thing, Steve corrected me via email. And although it's on the agenda, it's that, I'm just asking to amend it to.
Yeah, it, and in your letter, it, it's, that's how it states in, in the packet, vote to transfer two thousand five hundred dollars from FY twenty-three Police Department budget to the Police Cruiser Reserve.
And that's how the motions would go each quarter for the rest of the year, to equal ten thousand at the end.
I, 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 I'm okay with that, but I, I, we, I think the board needs to memorialize where it came from, that it didn't come from the budget process, that it came from a grant that was applied. And, and, I just think we need to know that, huh?
We just utilized the grant in another place.
So we, we moved the entire SIU grant to offset an entire line item in the budget of fifty-seven thousand dollars, um, which freed up that budget line item to be not spent this year, and then we're gonna overspend a line. It'll all flush out at the end, the net will be sixty thousand, but the transfer has to come from, the vote has to be through. I, I guess.
Yeah, the money is in the Police Department budget. That was the, the budget that you showed us when Bill was here, till we, and we saw that in there.
Yeah, and that budget that I gave you, all those amendments.
Right.
Yeah.
So the re-
It's just, it just, it's, you're just washing ten thousand dollars out, which is what we talked about, making sure happened on a quarterly basis, so that that money didn't disappear somewhere else. That, not that it would, but, y- y- you know, I mean, things happen, but.
I'm okay.
We wanted to make sure that that money that we wanted in the, in the vehicle account got there. Paul?
No, I'm sorry, I said, I'm, I'm good, too, the motion changed.
And we're able to do this because we received an SIU.
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
That's correct. Any discussion? Everybody's good? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, unanimous. Appointments, are there any appointments?
I got a question, along with on police.
Yes.
Did, did, did the, uh, transfer take place from the balance from the paving grant? Did I recall that from, was that, did that happen at a meeting through, to go, I know we were debating about what the amount was, but I'm wondering whether or not.
Yeah, the, the amount that's supposed to go for the car.
Maybe that's a question for another meeting.
From, from Lake Industries' grant, did that get put in the reserve?
Yes, but, but, but it should've been placed in reserves, or later on, you can do that for another meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me take a peek at that.
Yeah, make sure, yeah, that, thank you, Dave.
I'm not sure if we just auto transferred it because it was already.
I think, I think we're the only ones that can move it in and out of, uh, reserves.
Or wherever it is. It was a contract, like he said, so it's money that came into the general account, but the movement.
But the proposal, but the proposal was part of the car.
Right.
And I would hate to lose, just like we just did, and absorb it in a budget when it needed to go into car replacement.
That was the whole point.
Yeah, I agree.
It's like sixty-seven hundred dollars, I think.
Whatever the balance was, I don't know.
Something like that, if I remember right. It, it needs to get moved into the car again, that's what we're talking about.
And we're the only ones that can do that.
That's right. Um, so, appointments, um, I, I wanna, uh, make, no, I don't see any appointments on here, but I wanna make note, um, I see Joseph Buble is, is still online, um, I think last year, Joe, you were on the, um, Budget Advisory Committee, there's still some openings over there, if you have time.
I'm still on it, as far as I know, just we haven't had anybody on the actual boards for meetings.
Joe, were you appointed for FY twenty-three, or were you appointed for FY twenty-two? I'm sorry, I don't know this off the top of my head.
Uh, you'll have to check in Floanne's office, honestly.
How long is it?
Sure, it was for this current year.
Okay.
When did we, do you remember when we did that, Joe? I'm glad, I'm glad to hear it, I just wanna make sure that...
It was right before I got on the zoning board, because there wasn't anybody on Budget Committee. In order to have meetings, I then focused my attention towards zoning somewhere that could, something to be done.
Okay, so that was about four months ago, if I remember right. Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
Roughly, okay.
We'll have to check the records to see when it was officially.
Okay, thanks. You know anybody else? Pass the word, please.
That's a hard battle right there.
Yeah.
So just, Mike, there's two right now on, on, is there two official people on the budget?
Johnson and Joe.
If that's correct, then we do have two people, yes.
Okay.
We need at least one more.
Is Nicole still on it? I know that she's on the select board now, but, not select board, the school board. But, um, I don't know if she ever came off of it or not.
It's only a one-year appointment.
Yeah, her appointment was for...
Okay, yeah, then she'd be off of it.
Well, anyways, can I make a recommendation that even, even though you don't have a meeting yet, that the information that you're giving to us, make sure that it goes to, to, to the two members that are there already, too, so they can see what's going on? Please.
Yeah, I'll take that after, after, oh, we're actually, we're in a, we're in business first. Brandon, you, these are going, you got a, some sort of folder or something for each of us that you're creating or something?
Yeah, and I'm not sure if you want those, do you want those in the folder now, or would...
Well, I, I want it.
We don't get those till later.
What, folders we don't get till later? At, at least, well...
We have to be good enough to get them.
You mean, we're gonna get Halloween candy, too? Cash and prizes?
Yeah.
Do you have to be a resident of the town to be on the Budget Committee?
No, a majority, I don't think it's a requirement for any board commission, but other than the state recommends or highly suggests that any board commission be made up of a majority of its members.
Why would someone wanna be on the committee if they're not a town member?
Because they love accounting.
Yeah, I know. Why, why do you, why did you wanna tell me I can't do something?
I'm just telling you what it says in the law, that's a good question.
I'd almost think that somebody that had a different look on things could look at things differently. That's all.
Well, what, what happened is Natalia was appointed this year, but now we're not. She's not a resident, she's an accountant, so...
There, there you have it.
Same thing to the girl who went down with her, she's no longer a resident, but she was on for years.
Yeah, um, I mean, we had a member of the planning commission that was not a resident of the United States. They lived in town. I'm just telling you.
You're just out there.
I know.
Can we mush?
We are mushing. Uh, any other business anybody needs to discuss? Do I hear a motion on the warrants?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve the warrant from meeting of October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. For general fund payroll, fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and one cent. Operating expense, twenty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. Uh, highway payroll is eight thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty cents. Operating expense is twenty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. Solid waste management payroll is two thousand sixty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents, and operating expense is eighteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-two cents. And my screen just went weird. Library payroll is two thousand one hundred and one dollars and forty-six cents and zero operating cents. Roof RFPs, hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty cents.